I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blessed be God, Heavenly Father, we come before you this day asking for your blessings, your guidance, for us patience and wisdom as we go about the work of this great county. Dear Lord God, watch over those who serve and protect us, in His precious name we pray. Amen.
Have I had a chance to review the light? So, April?
Yep, yes, sir.
Any questions?
No.
Have a motion to approve, minutes, April?
Come on.
Todd's made a motion.
Second.
Rick second, all favor say aye.
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 Welcome, Rachel.
Welcome, Rachel again.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a voice please?
No.
You're doing here, I'm gonna go ahead and move it in. I thought I was late.
I'm sorry, not to leave you.
That's okay. Sometimes we're not either.
Not either, okay. So, I'm not on the support here. I'm here, I'm a resident of Washington County, I live on Quarry, wrote it 2110, and on the date of...
Could I ask you, would you pull my residence?
I'm sorry.
You're okay.
On the day of 10/27, my girlfriend, Sherry Weitzman, was leaving my home and headed into town to meet with me. When she come to negotiate the bridge that brings the two roads together, Quarry and Market, she missed the turn. It threw her car up and over the rail and into the creek. Okay? And she had quite a bit of head trauma, but her cause of death was asphyxiation, where she laid there strapped in upside down in the creek. And I know that from the coroner's report, where she had water and debris in her lungs. What I'm here about is I'd like to honor her in some way, and not by putting up a cross or something, that might happen at some time. But I've studied the area, it's a rather sharp turn, there's not much marking as far as the center of the road, and now it's worse than ever because of the detour, that we don't know, you know, we marked the road here in town, where you can see the edges and know the center of the road, which might have helped her in some way. She probably was having a medical problem at the time of the accident, which would have not prevented it maybe, but possibly could have. In the westbound lane, there's a vertical sign that is yellow and white stripe, there's none coming east out of that area. Possibly Dad would have even stopped the vehicle from ever getting up on the rail. The rail is damaged from previous accidents, it's nothing her little Honda Civic could have ever done, evidently a truck or something has hit and bumped the rail, which actually worked as sort of a ramp to catapult her up on top of that rail, that her car would even be on it. So, what I'm asking is possibly the lines be drawn, the rail be fixed, and sign put up lights in the westbound lane. There's also one other thing about that road, and I don't know how many of you travel it, but if you ever venture off to the Riley Road, it was paved at one time, and the later pavement didn't fall with the first one. So, there's a lip in about a three or four inch drop. I've actually run off of it a couple times myself in the dark, that once you're off, it's not that difficult to get back that it does to distract you from what's in the bridge and that turn, because, you know, the turn is actually really close to that bridge. And that's what I'm here, that's what I want to bring before you, see if we can get something done.
We're sorry for your loss, and not a good way to say anything, but we do need to review what you said, and we'll take your suggestions into account, let us review, and see what we can do.
I appreciate it.
Have I got any examples? Sorry, sorry is a smaller word in your case.
But seeing that it might not happen to anyone else, and it may not anyhow, but the possibility's still there, they created that one.
Our intention is to make all of our roads as safe as we can, we've got an excellent highway department, and there's always corrections that could be, should be. We appreciate you coming in, let us look at it, and see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Phil, will you come forward, please?
Speaking to Mike.
Say one.
So, our current phone system, Cisco Call Manager, will be turning six years old in January. Talking to our phone vendor to relicense it, re the support contracts that Cisco, the manufacturer requires, it'll cost, they said a minimum, probably more, forty thousand dollars to relicense it. Additionally, it's noted on number four there, they said another forty thousand probably in hardware that needs to be replaced. So, to continue with our existing phone system, it would be plus support of, they currently charge us roughly thirty-six hundred dollars in support, and they said that would go up. So, it didn't seem feasible to continue that as an option. So, I researched, I asked the vendor for several options, options are noted of hosted teams, using our Microsoft licensing teams to do hosted phone system. That would be, as noted, thirty-five hundred roughly, plus sixty-seven hundred of installation. And we could get our monthly cost down if we bought thirty-one thousand dollars of phones, actually purchased the phones, we would still have to pay support, et cetera. I looked at other hosted phone systems and options, mostly around twenty dollars a month for phones. I found Vonage phones, it's roughly twelve dollars a month for phones, and we would not have to purchase the phones, they'll give us the nicest phones they have. Those phones will leverage our existing infrastructure, so they'll operate like our current phones in kind of a separate network to not interfere with the data. And looking at the price for Vonage, it looks like it will cut our monthly expenses in half.
I have a phone similar to this one here, going out of that.
That's a smaller phone, but similar to what everybody else has, twelve button phones, speed dials, colored, there's a... I'll say this, most of our problems with the phone system have been internet related, so our phones still go with the internet. So, if we have internet outage, we, you know, the public can't call in, call out, or our system, you know, the complexity is an issue, let's say, you know, you've got problems with your virtual servers running things, but the hosted phones and our existing both are internet based. So, these phones, or the Vonage phones, are much more flexible, we can take them, we can unplug them, plug them in anywhere, we can have, you know, disaster happens, people could be using their phones and apps and things like that, so it does give us a lot more options, you know, phones are independent, they can work anywhere, they can move around without much engineering, et cetera.
So, your recommendation is the Vonage?
Yes, sir.
Change your subject, and being that our internet related, have you heard anything about Wood Jackson County, this, right on?
I heard last, I heard this Christmas, that was quite a while ago, I know they're in the facility, I think are closed, they came through the courthouse here, so I think they're pretty close, but I haven't had any contact with them. That will be a wonderful thing to have, I think will increase our bandwidth, our pipe to the internet probably ten times, and reduce our costs greatly.
See you then.
When we did that. So, that'll give us two fiber connections at our two communications.
Questions?
Note upon the recommendation of Mr. Bradford, on that motion, that we approve the Vonage option.
I'll second that. Rick's made a motion, Todd's second, all favor say aye.
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 So, how long will it take?
We have to, you know, credit act, et cetera, we'll have a contract issue, but I, my goal will be hopefully through the, by the end of the year.
At the end of this year?
Hopefully, to move phone numbers and stuff, it could take up to ninety days, but as soon as we, you know, I'd say pull the trigger and say go, it could happen within probably sixty days. It's not close to first year.
Appreciate it, Bill.
Yeah, thank you for all your work, I know you've been working on this for two or three months, yeah, quite a bit, but you're welcome, appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks for saving us some money.
Sit in office, Maggie?
Maggie? Sorry. There she is.
Ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, come on.
This comes right on through. I hear you, it's morning.
I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I won't take too much of your time, we just wanted to kind of check in with you guys, and thank you for supporting us and our programs, and this is a report that our area put together. So, the first page is, you'll see some numbers, that's kind of an area wide numbers, so I included that just so you guys could see it, and then we put together a short report, each of us, myself, Danielle, and Sonya, did a little write-up of program, like one program that we offered over the last year, what we were able to do, and then the last page is also area wide programming as well, so we just wanted to give you this to kind of keep you updated on what we're doing, we're going to be able to provide for the youth and everyone in Washington County. I guess I'll just highlight, the program I highlighted was our 4H meal kits that we did, the back-to-school meal kits, Sonya talked about her foster program, which is her 13th, the second time around, she hasn't been able to offer that program twice, and then Danielle highlighted her calling and her habit that workshop series, so these were all really good programs that we've been able to do, and we're continuing to offer stuff like this over the next year, but just wanted to kind of check in with you guys, and thank you, and if you have any questions or anything, just invite you to, to any programs that are meant to be happening, that we're putting on in our office here, more than I'll think to come and attend, and check those out.
I think you've been busy.
Yeah, it's been a busy, it's been a busy year, but we were able to, last year, our 4H numbers were up, we had an eight percent increase in youth, so we're back to, you know, as you know, probably like twenty-twenty, or everything kind of went down statewide, our networks were way down, and so we're trying to build back up, and so, yeah, we had an eight percent increase in youth last year, which is really exciting, we have a big kickoff event tonight, so we're hoping to get some new numbers like that tonight, and we have the OBI at Creek, with our council provided Washington 4H t-shirts to anybody that signs up by December 1st, so we're trying to get a bunch of people to sign up by the end of the, give out our t-shirts, so.
So, you're ready for the fair?
Yeah. Yep, so.
I can't tell me this.
Do what?
Right to host the meetings.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
You guys do a great job out there.
Thank you, we appreciate it, we always appreciate your guys' support, so, we're going to come and check in, and reach out to, I'm sure you guys have our contact information, always there to help you with anything, or questions or anything, so.
Maggie, are your youth numbers, you said you got to increase, because, of course, you had a kind of a down year last couple of years, but are you back up yet to what the peak numbers were, like in nineteen, or?
I think, yeah, so we had a, I don't know the exact numbers, we had a four percent increase the year before, and then we had an eight percent increase last year, so I think we're getting pretty close.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, we're, we didn't have, I think statewide, they had almost like a twenty percent drop, we didn't have that big of a drop, so, we're, yeah, it's not as bad, but we're trying to get in the schools and get, you know, new kids signed up and keep our old members coming back, so, it's a job in itself, just getting rolling up and...
Nothing more kids we can get involved, compared to all those years.
Yeah, yeah, so we try to keep events, keep different events and things happening to keep them involved, kids are involved in a lot of things these days, and so we can keep things exciting and fun for them to come to, to keep them involved, or they'll move on to something else.
Yeah. Well, everything you do, and the ladies that work with you, Sonya and Danielle, you're certainly an asset to our community, and I've said this many times, I wish we could go back ten, twenty, thirty years and track the children who were involved in 4H and in these programs, and to see what kind of people they turned out to be, and I dare say, you'd find very few of them out here on top of the hill with the tension.
Right, they have done a statewide study about that, actually, where after 4H, the percentage that go on to college, and then the percentage that come back and do, sort of, it was a while ago, they did like a ten-year study on it, and it was, you know, good findings.
Yes, good.
So, yeah.
We appreciate what you do.
Wow, we'll take any more of your time, but if you look through this, have any questions or anything, just reach out to one of us, and we're happy to talk to you, so.
I saw cheese balls this year.
Orders are due today, yes, I will take cheese ball orders. How many would you like?
I need one, I sure.
One, what kind?
Whatever you want, I don't, I ain't got that many people coming in, you can get them.
Okay, two, is there like pecans, plain, parsley, whatever you want?
Would you want one?
Parsley?
Pecan.
One pecan, two parsley, okay, I can remember that, any other words? Parsley, one.
And, and just...
Should I have a hint?
Just in case, we might not make it as a normal procedure, coming in next...
Come on, it's a day. Okay, anybody else?
Do yourself a...
Well, we're making them again on December 1st, I guess, so, you wanted two parsley, and you wanted one con.
I'll put you some.
You wanted three.
What is this, what is this?
No, no, I wasn't going to do that. You wanted one, one parsley, would you like it?
No, thank you.
Yes, they are due today, we're making them next Tuesday, so.
Well, they are good.
They are good.
We appreciate it.
Thanks, I do.
Thank you, guys. Did you want two both?
Give me two of each.
Okay, go ahead, good. What's your name?
George.
George.
I forgot this too.
Oh, really?
Chris Lee.
Okay. What did you say you wanted to do? Two, two pecan, two parsley, and two plain?
This is more.
Just two pecan. What's your phone number? There are eight numbers. So, we pick up next Tuesday at the extension office, between five and seven.
Mr. and Mrs. Jager, would you come on up?
Not long.
Okay, well, you have, they don't have a Tuesday, but we're going to, we're going to, you know, the government, just down from the...
Excuse us, we gotta take care of some other business, here's a guy, gotta make some profit, gotta make some money, we don't want that to happen.
Absolutely.
You got the floor, Rick.
Well, we just wanted, first of all, kind of come in and touch base and tell you all thank you, we did our trunk or treat at the ball field back in October, we estimated we sold over two-hundred-and-fifty kids. Good deal. Yeah, they said it was amazing, it was fun, it was a blast. We have taken all of our stuff out of the community room, up our community center, and we have turned the key back into your office downstairs just all ago. We have a light-up Hardestburg event planned for December 3rd, we have vendors on the field, we're gonna have Christmas displays up, Sana will be there, the branch will be there, we're even trying to plan a town parade, any and all of the welcome, any and all the invited, come have fun. But our biggest thing is, we want to let you all know, we have received, all of our paperwork for 501(c)(3), and we are in the works of the fence that is the big complaint in the town, we have got an estimate to fix that, and we have applied great grants, we should know by middle of next month, too, if we have been approved for that grant, to get that answer. Is there anything you offering from us, and where do we go from here?
No, your fundraiser, that's been taken care of, so you're ready to go on that. Everything has been approved by Board of Health, and you are 501(c)(3). Have you turned a copy of that in to the doctor yet?
Did you give her a copy of that? If not, you know what, I already...
We talked about it.
We do need a copy.
Absolutely.
Okay, other than that...
Steve, moving on.
Keep bringing them in.
Sounds good, isn't it?
You're gonna be advertising, witness, it's gonna be to the community.
It's already out.
It's actually been in Salem leader already.
Okay.
It's December 3rd.
Okay, so it sounds like you're about ready to play baseball again.
We're ready, we're ready, I'm ready to get kids back out.
I appreciate all your work.
That comes, that'll come about, we'll start that about the end of March, first of April.
Actual ball season.
So, we'll just have to talk about what happens for the year.
How many kids do you have playing down there?
Last year we had, last season we had a hundred.
That was right at a hundred.
Yeah.
With now a ball team.
Give or take, a hundred or better.
Do they come from right here in town, around that one problem?
Paoli, Crawford County, Harrison County, here, Salem, I mean, we've had them all over the county, so, you know, a lot of, like the Crawford County, they live over off sixty-six or up the county line, it's closer, we're closer than Crawford is, so.
Some of our kids that live there in town go to Harrison County, to Morgan or whatever, so.
Well, it's just like 4H, a little late, and as long as we keep our kids active and keep them going, and appreciate all of your support.
As long as I'll give you permission, I'll be there doing it, so.
Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two board appointments, commissioner board appointments for the medical, and they are...
Lindsey Brooks and Dr. Knoll.
Lindsey Brooks and Dr. Knoll, I need a motion to approve Lindsey Brooks and Dr. Knoll to the medical board.
I'll read that motion.
Todd's made a motion.
I'll second.
Rick second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Todd, motion carried. Discussion of ordinance, we didn't get some of the information in, so we're on table that for the December meeting. Rick, how are you doing?
All right. I'd like to second what Phil says, Mr. Crowe, we're sorry for your loss, and I can assure you we'll be looking into the bridge down there, see if we can make it safer.
Thank you, all right.
Thank you, Rick.
First order of business, we have an inventory update for Buffalo Trace in Jackson Township. It currently shows the road being one point four miles long, we need to correct that in that township. Nothing has changed, it's just a typo in the system, GIS, it actually shows the road going up to Larry Merrill's driveway, and the pavement ends right there at the back end.
School bus has some rock buried, they made it.
I don't know, they built a house there on the left, I don't know if they've got kids or not, but if they did, the bus would come around right there to Larry's driveway.
Does that bridge satisfy you there at Foddy Hill?
Oh, yeah. So, we just need the minutes to show that Buffalo Trace will be updated from one point four to one point two.
Sorry, I was on the wrong road. There is any kids back at Riddanmore.
I don't know, I'm not sure who lives in that new house they built.
So, just make the correction.
Yeah, one point four to one point two.
One point four to one point two.
We'll get that sent to the state.
If it does section, you gotta not find a yellow.
The yellow is department's incorrect, the road goes there and there ends, and that little yellow kicker should be taken off, but that's actually Larry's driveway.
Okay, thank you.
And I've got to update our weight limit signs on the bridges, as you know, there was a deadline to have all those installed, and we had to go by that and put it up as long as we could, well, that was a national deadline, so they could only face it off of what our last weight rating was with bridge inspections, well, coincidentally, our new weight rating is now going on, so some of the signs we just put up were taken back down, and five more...
Whatever you want, I don't, I ain't got that many people coming in.
Okay, two, if there's like pecans, plain, parsley, whatever you want.
Would you want one?
Parsley?
Pecan.
One pecan, two parsley, okay, I can remember that, any other words? Parsley, one.
And, and just, just in case, we might not make it as a normal procedure coming in next year.
Come on in today. Okay. Anybody else?
Do yourself a...
Well, we're making them again on December 20th, I guess, so. You wanted two parsley. If you wanted one con. You wanted three.
What is this?
No, no, I wasn't going to do that. You wanted one, if, one parsley, would you like it?
No, thank you.
Yes, they are due today, we're making them next Tuesday, so.
Well, they are good.
They are good.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Did you want cheese balls?
Yes. I need two of each.
Okay, go ahead, good. What's your name?
George. I forgot this too.
Oh, really?
First lady.
What did you say you wanted? Two, two pecan, two parsley, and two plain? Just two pecan. What's your phone number? They're $8. No, so we pick up next Tuesday at the extension office between 5:00 and 7:00.
Mr. Mrs. Jager, would you come on up?
Okay, we can call you, we have that open day for Tuesday, but we'll...
Excuse us, we gotta take care of some other business, yours again, gotta make some profit, gotta make some money, we don't want that to bounce.
Absolutely.
You got the floor.
Well, we just wanted, first of all, kind of come in and touch base and tell you all thank you. We did our trunk or treat at the ballpark back in October. We estimated we saw over 250 kids. The deal, as they say, was amazing, it was fun, it was a blast. Uh, we have taken all of our stuff out of the community room of our community center, and we have turned the key back into your office. Sound steps just all ago. We have a light-up Marden'sburg event planned for December 3rd. We have vendors on the field, we're gonna have Christmas displays up, Sina will be there, the ranch will be there. Uh, we're even trying to plan a town parade. Any and all of the welcome, any and all the invited, come have fun. But our biggest thing is, we want to let you all know, we have received all of our paperwork for 501(c)(3), and we are in the works of the fence that is the big complaint in the town. We have got an estimate to fix that, and we have applied great grants. We should know by middle of next month, too. If we have been approved of that grant, it'll be that next week. Is there anything you want from us, and where do we go from here?
No, your fundraiser, that's been taken care of, so you're ready to go on that. Everything has been approved by Board of Health, and being you are 501(c)(3), have you turned a copy of that in to the archer yet?
Did you give her a copy of that? That's not, you know, we talked about it.
Okay, we do need a copy.
Absolutely.
Okay. Keep bringing them in.
Sounds good, isn't it?
You're gonna be advertising, witness, it's gonna be to the community.
It's already out.
It's been, it's actually been in Salem later on.
Okay.
It's December 3rd.
Okay. So it sounds like you're about ready to play baseball again.
We're ready, because we're ready, I'm ready to get kids back out.
I appreciate all your work.
That comes, that'll come about, we'll start that about the end of March versus April.
Actual ball season.
So we'll just have to talk about what happens for the year.
How many kids do you have playing down there?
Last year we had, last season we had 100.
That was right at 100.
Yeah.
With now a ball team.
Give or take, 100 or better.
Good, come from Roger in town, around that, from Paoli, Crawford County, Harrison County, uh, here, Salem, I mean, we've had them all over the county. So, you know, a lot of, like the Crawford County, they live over off 66, right up the county line.
So Harrison.
It's closer, we're closer than Crawford is to them.
Some of our kids that live there in town go to Harrison County, to Morgan or whatever, so.
Well, it's just like 4H, a little late, and as long as we keep our kids active and keep them going and appreciate all the coordination support.
As long as I'll give you permission, I'll be there doing it, so.
Appreciate your work. We have two board appointments, commissioner board appointments for the medical, and they are?
And Dr. Noel.
Lindsey Brooks and Dr. Noel. I need a motion to approve Lindsey Brooks and Dr. Noel to the medical board.
Open that motion.
Todd's made a motion.
I'll second.
Rick second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Uh, discussion of ordinance, we didn't get some of the information in, so we're table that for the December meeting. Rick, how any further? How are you this morning?
All right. First of all, I'd like to second what Phil says, Mr. Brooks, we're sorry for your loss, and I'm sure you'll be looking into the bridge down there, see if we can make it safer.
Thank you, our thanks.
Thank you, Rick.
First order of business, we have an inventory update for Buffalo Trace in Jackson Township. It currently shows the road being 1.4 miles long, and we need to correct that in downtown township. Nothing has changed, it's just a typo in the system, GIS. It actually shows the road going up the Larry Merrill driveway, and the pavement ends right there at the back end.
School bus doesn't run very, they made it?
I don't know if they've got kids or not, but if they did, the bus would come around right up Larry Drive Way.
Is that bridge satisfactory there to foot the hill?
Uh, yeah. So we just need the minutes to show that Buffalo Trace will be updated from 1.4 to
Sorry, I was on the wrong road. There is any kids back at Rodean Mall?
I don't know, I'm not sure who lives in that new house they built.
So just make the correction?
Yeah, 1.4 to 1.2.
1.4 to 1.2.
We'll get that sent to the state.
Is it done section, you have not finding yellow?
The yellow is Department Center, right, the road goes there to the ends, and that little yellow kicker should be taken off of that's actually Larry Drive Way.
Okay. Thank you.
And I've got to update our weight limit signs on the bridges. As you know, there was a deadline to have all those installed, and we had to go by that and put it off as long as we could. Well, that was a national deadline, so they could only face it off of what our last weight rating was of bridge inspections. Well, coincidentally, our new weight rating is now going on, so some of the signs we just put up were taken back down, and five more bridges have been added. They have rated 45 out of 134 bridges, so I'm sure there's more to come. But at this time, one bridge, all 10 signs will be taken down and removed. One bridge, we added 10 new signs, another bridge we added 10 new signs, another bridge we added 6 new signs, and one was just rerated and will have six different signs. We'll take those down, put new ones up, and I expect more, because like I say, this is 45 out of 134, so there'll be more chances.
Any of the signs that were taken down could be used on another bridge.
There is a slim chance. You'd think it was very generic, but they're always off by one ton, is how it's worked out. I mean, if we eventually get a big enough pile, there'll be some that'll work, but you'd think if some of them was 9, 10, 11, but it's always, this one's 9, 10, 11, this one's 9, 10, 15, there's always a slight difference, and I have to do that.
I assume this is a lot of cost.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So eventually, like I say, if we get a bigger pile over the corner, we can sort of reuse some, maybe a lot.
Have there been any vandalism yet on any of them?
Uh, we've had a couple run over here, the same ones with grain trucks.
Thank you.
We've had a couple run over already. But we'll keep on keeping on, everything's ready for winter, all trucks are set up for snow, we dodged a bullet there, Saturday, it's a little bit of ground, he helped us out, it'll get us sooner. All buildings are full assault, everything ready.
I think the best chance is what, Tuesday?
Yeah. There's a chance, you know, today is mainly gonna be a rain, and it's gonna turn real cold Friday, but I don't see a lot of precipitation. That's everything from you?
Appreciate all your work, Rick. You have all your trucks now.
So wait until, and the city, they want to get you, they're gonna cross, so they're gonna do it for some. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick.
We need to bring in the metal machine here at the courthouse, the cost will be $4. So you have a new machine and contractor will be good for 6300.
The motion? Second. Rick's made a motion, Todd second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Stephanie?
Yes.
I seen you come in, you make it to the election?
I did, I got to bed by 3:00 a.m., so, yeah, so we had a good election, and, you know, always want really high turnout, so it makes all the hard work worth it, but we still had good turnout, and everything went well, and so, we were very blessed.
Good, appreciate all your work. Should come in here. Okay, yeah. She's on, uh, I'd like to hear, who's she at?
She's all behind.
She done? So, with that being said... Because she was here. She's on a tight schedule. Okay. The motion good, Jerry? Rick made a motion, Todd second, all favor say aye. All right. Thank you. Eric, save your phone.